Good evening. Usually I'm asked at these meetings to invoke deity and I'm pleased to do that, but I wanted to take just a couple of minutes to invoke humanity. One of the reasons I'm here tonight is because I came over to invite everybody to the Faith Lutheran Church next Monday night at 6:00 PM where there'll be a grand potluck dinner and everybody in the community is invited. And I essentially said yes to this so that I could invite you to that. Bring your casseroles, bring your sausages and sauerkraut and your scalped potatoes. You need not bring Pringles, I'll cover them. Next week, Faith Lutheran Church, same time, different channel. I also discovered this morning at Big Boys when the unofficial mayor of Bridgeport was absent that Bud Gilmore, some of you know Bud, don't you? Bud Gilmore is having trouble with his hip, so I went over to talk to him about his hip, but I couldn't resist talking about tonight. I said, "Have you ever had any meetings like that here before?" And he looked at me like I was a dunce because of course there's been dozens of these kinds of meetings over the years. And I asked him how they proceeded into those meetings, what happened before the meetings. Does anybody know that place that has kind of a leaning T on Dixie? I think it's called Todd's. That was where a lot of important conversations and not a little beer was consumed prior to meetings. I don't know how many of you have had beer this week with each other or with any of the board members, but it might have helped. You look pretty dry tonight. And he told me that his office was always open and when people found him there, they would come in and they would start asking hard questions. They had some big concerns, sometimes angry concerns, and that he never got mad at any of them as he explained as best he could why the actions were taken that were taken. They did not always come to agreement, citizens and Bud. And on one occasion, he said he did lose his temper because a fellow from the garden had come and grown up with the guy and he commenced yelling at him. Bud, and for some reasons Bud just yelled right back like they were kids on a school ground. And he found out later that one of the women in the outer office ran to the chief of police because she thought there'd be bloodletting. And when it was all over, I don't know if they had a meeting of the minds, but they knew that they had met each other as friends. So, end of my story, let's pray. Oh God, you have shown us in your law, you have spoken to us through your prophets, you have embodied the witness in your anointed one, and so we've heard the word that we should love our neighbors as we love ourselves. Help us to see the neighbor in ourselves and to see ourselves in the neighbor tonight. Help us, even if we can't completely agree, even if the resolution of this meeting cannot be satisfying for all, help us to know that we've been neighbors and that we've shown concern for each other. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Would you all rise to the platform, please? Jim, would you like to...
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you like to...
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
LaShore?
Here.
Seacord?
Here.
Townsend?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
All are present.
Before we get started with the meeting, earlier today I had an injection in my eye, I have some issues with my eyes. And at the present time, my eye hurts a lot and I'm having a real hard time focusing. I'm going to try and make it through the meeting, but if it gets to the point where I'm able to visually see what I'm doing, I might ask another member to take over the meeting and I might ask for the first sentence that they have, just plain. Okay. We have motion for adoption, agenda, please.
I move that we approve the adoption of the agenda as presented.
Second?
Motion been made and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion, any questions? Hearing done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes of November 5th, 2014, regular meeting.
I move that we approve the minutes of November 5th, 2014, as presented.
Second?
Motion been made and seconded to approve the minutes of the November 5th, 2014, regular meeting. Everyone had enough to read it. Anyone have any questions, changes? Hearing done, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Next, we have special orders. Public hearing for this special assessment for the police department. Before we get into that, I'm going to try and redo this. I know many of you don't get notifications through the township by Constant Contact and this was sent out on Constant Contact and also published on the website. If you'll indulge me just a minute, I'll try and get through this thing. A public hearing on November 17, 2014, 6:00 PM. Public hearing is in regards to the police and fire special assessment. There have been many questions raised as to what the letter meant that was mailed on November 6th. The following is meant to address some of the top questions brought to our attention. Millage versus assessment. Millage is constant for a number of years. In other words, if it's X number of dollars, it stays that way for how many ever years. And it's taxed on all properties according to their taxable value. So if you've got a small lot, small house, you pay a small amount. If you have a large property and a lot of land, you pay a lot more. And it cannot be changed and it could go up and down with taxable value increasing or decreasing. An assessment, taxpayers pay the same amount on properties that have a structure on them. The amount of assessment will be reviewed each year and has to be renewed by the board. The assessment may go down if the township were to receive federal or state grant monies that would affect the, that would offset the required monies needed. Public Act 33 states that the amount can be increased by no more than 10% without notification of owners of properties within the special assessment district. If it was a situation of more than 10%, everyone in the district would have to be notified of that. And finally, the board has no intention of raising the amount of the assessment. Public Act 33 and Public Act 188 are statutes that outline the process and requirements for special assessments. They were created by state legislation. Understandably, there is concern when it is stated we can increase the assessment by 10% each year. This is part of the statute that we would like to leave out. Obviously, it causes some people some frustration and concern. But under Public Act 138, there's a defined outline of how things have to be processed no differently than tonight's meeting wasn't necessary. Obviously, we can't pick and choose parts that we like or don't like that may cause us concern for some residents. Timeline to get the assessment on the 2014 tax rule. If we do not get approval and the tax rule to the county immediately, we won't be able to collect the monies to be used until the following year, county prints our tax bills. This would cause us to wait until 2016 to hire two additional police officers and start making necessary repairs and purchasing equipment for the fire department. Budget line item. The police and fire budgets will have subtle line items, line items that will reflect the monies collected from the assessment, any detail as to what the money was spent on. When our police and fire chiefs presented the original assessment amounts to the board, they took into consideration increases in costs with inflation in both police and fire budgets. Hopefully, this will address some of the concerns that have been brought to our attention. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing for the special assessment for the police department. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor? If you would, please come forward. Just another note too, we've received numerous letters the past few days. The board has reviewed all those, they'll take into consideration. Okay, anyone like to speak in favor? Excuse me. If you would like to speak in favor, if you could come up to the microphone, please.
I'm sorry, sir, I'm in a disadvantage here. I'm not sure what the special assessment for police and fire includes, what the amounts are. And so I'm asking for just a little information.
Is the microphone on?
Yeah, I hear nothing. I was asking for information about what, about how much the special assessment will be.
Okay. Forty-five dollars for the police and thirty, I'm sorry, for the fire? Thirty?
Thirty-seven. What'd you say that in the microphone? Okay, police department is thirty-seven, eighty for five years. It's every order tax bill starting in 2014. And then fire is forty-five dollars, that's for ten years on the order tax bill again, starting in 2014. This week. And it's for each person, each property?
Each property that has a structure. Vacant land would not be assessed.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along. Is there anyone who'd like to speak against?
Can I?
Could you keep the conversation down a little bit, please? It makes it hard for everyone to hear.
Can anybody hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, I have...
Will you give me your name and address, please?
Josh Dalton, 6917 East Curtis Road.
I'm sorry, what was the address?
6917 East Curtis Road.
Thank you.
I have some real concerns with the actual writing of your ballot initiative and that it may be constitutionally incorrect. In there, you're asking for two new hires of officers. In the public act, it actually states that you can hire officers, but in there, it doesn't grant the special assessment funds to actually pay for the officers. In fact, it's very specific to the fact that that money must come from the general fund. Additionally, under MCL 41.801 PA 33 of 1951, section 13-2 states, "For purchasing and housing equipment for the operation equipment or both may be defrayed by special assessment on the lands and premises in the township or townships to be benefited." In this particular situation, not only will the lands benefit, but also the structures. Therefore, by going ahead and trying to exempt vacant land, you are again going against the state constitution. Additionally, MCL 41.813, Public Act 33 of 1951, section 13 states, "By a majority vote of the township board or at a regular or special meeting called for that purpose, the township board may provide for the employment of one or more traffic officers." That is the actual statement that is in there, you can look it up for yourself. Also, MCL 41.812, section 121-5 states, "An administrative board created under this section shall prepare an annual police budget or fire department budget or both to be submitted by the township board. The budget shall be reviewed by the township board and may be amended or altered in any manner." In light of this information that I'm providing above it, the township now needs to take responsibility to make sure that the actual appropriations are amended and altered. Until this is done, the township should not and cannot proceed nor adopt this budget nor should they proceed without spreading this on the tax rule. It's unfortunate that we're at a time crunch for tax rule, however continuing to proceed with these known issues as again not being very diligent to the position you were hired to do and opens a township up to potential litigation. Case law dictates that although flat tax is acceptable, it must be based on benefits received. In this case, you are exempting other parcels from paying, yet they're still receiving the actual benefit. This proposal was legally flawed from the beginning and should not be proceeded with. We can even look deeper into the substantial disproportionality as everyone will not be taxed the same that are included. In fact, the statute states, "You will still have to refer to my special assessment by ad valorem standards, although it may come out to be the same flat tax." The example of that would be property A will be taxed based on their value, but B could be assessed more mills to get to that thirty-seven, ninety, or forty-five dollar mark for the property. And B, although the end result's the same for monies owed by all the properties included, this is substantial and unreasonable disproportionality between the amount assessed and the value which accrues to the land by such improvements. It's clear that the properties assessed will not be proportioned to the benefits received. In addition, others with vacant property will now receive a benefit that is supposed to be especially benefiting in nature to special assessments. This is another example of how the special assessment is flawed in nature and this is legally invalid under the state law. These are all known issues with the police act. Some of them are the same with the fire department. One in particular is that, and I can talk about it now or I can talk about when you asked for the fire situation.
Right.
Okay, just for the police. So those are the statutes that are being violated under state law if you proceed. Unfortunately, they don't include buildings. It makes no determination that buildings can be included in the state statute. In fact, the actual case law states that if you, to appear, apologize. "The powers granted by this act with respect to police and fire protection may be exercised with respect to police protection alone, fire protection alone, or police and fire protection in combination." Additionally, MC 41.806 states, "Police and fire departments contracts for services or for maintenance and operation of equipment." And section 6 E states, "Care and manage the motor vehicles, apparatus, equipment, property, and buildings pertaining to the police and fire departments." This should not be interpreted as utilizing the funds for maintenance and repair of buildings and structures. There are already special assessment acts for this type of funding. Lastly, understand and be aware, case law already exists for this, that nothing may be read into these statutes and that they speak for themselves. So I did put a letter there, please read through it and understand that by proceeding with your initiative the way it is now, you're opening up the township to possible litigation. Thank you.
Thank you. I did receive your letter and I have read through it. We did receive your letter. Just a little comment, all of this was run through an attorney who handles these things, so hopefully the attorney got it right because we're following the guidelines that was given to us by the attorney who handles municipalities, specializes in this kind of stuff, so I hear what you're saying and it may be valid and you name no more than the attorney does, I guess, but we will take it into consideration. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak against? Would anyone like to speak against? Could you come forward, please?
Hi, my name is Solon Wills-Caddis, 1100 Trina Street. I'm not for or against, I have a question. Do we have an assessment right now? Is this new? Is it, do we already have assessment for the police and fire?
Bridgeport has neither village or an assessment specifically for police and or fire.
Okay, so this is new.
To my knowledge, they never have.
Okay, so this is new. Okay.
This is new, that's correct. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Marty Adrian, 2861 Diamond Street. So one thing...
Excuse me, ma'am, just a second. Can you tip that down just a little bit? I want to make sure that everyone can hear me.
To start with, this proposal, although the letter refers to it being passed by the citizenry in the recent election, does not read the same as the ballot proposal. There are much, many other items that are not mentioned, wasn't mentioned in the election proposal. So in talking to people, there were a lot of citizens who don't feel that they voted for this. Fundamentally, I question whether it should have been a special assessment as opposed to a property village vote. For one thing, there's a serious consideration for many people in this community who have not recovered from the financial collapse and the special assessment do not include provisions for tax poverty exemption status that a property tax gives to these people. And we do need to consider their needs because a quarter of the children in this country go to bed hungry every night. And that's not my statistic, that's other people who have better ability to assess the population in general. And it is a concern here in Bridgeport, there are a lot of low-income people. We do need to weigh whether we need two more officers and a fire truck as opposed to feeding our children. So I do, in general, want to protest this action and I think things going to the ballot need to be more clear to the citizens for an accurate vote. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak against?
Yeah, Tim Novak, 3530 Summer Lane. Is there a reason to hire two more police officers? Has Bridgeport crime gone up that much or is there some reason for it? You know, do we need a new fire department? What's, I don't understand why, why would you want to spend this much money? You people are up there for the benefit of the township and for the people thinking that you will do your best to do for good for the township. And this is what, you guys are doing stuff behind and you ain't explaining to the people of what you're doing. And this is what this meeting is about. This meeting should have been brought before you had your hidden meeting. Thank you.
Excuse me, sir, we did not have any hidden meeting? Just for clarification. And there's definitely a need for officers. Dave, I think we have six or seven hundred funds each month or possibly more than that?
We're averaging well over eight thousand funds a year.
Eight thousand calls a year. We're presently down because when we went through the cutbacks where our funding got reduced, we had to cut back on staff. We basically went through and cut all the way through the whole township structure itself, office personnel, four, if I recall, four police officers?
Five.
Parks and Rec, or excuse me, Water Department was reduced. Crime is not going down. When you talk about the police department, we're frequently left with no officers to cover the township. Each time an officer is involved in an issue where they have to take somebody to jail, that kind of thing, if it goes to court, the officer has to appear in court. That sometimes takes half a day. The way the structure's set up with the court system now, frequently it happens that they show up and they have to wait around for an hour or two and then they cancel proceedings and make a motion, set it for another day. That causes the officer again to go back another day. So we were then left without any police protection. Now, if you take a look around, you know, there's not a whole lot of sheriff's deputies running around. The state police post has been closed here. Many people, even though they see, they're using it basically as a staging area now at the state police. There are no officers assigned to the Bridgeport post. It really in actuality doesn't exist any longer. The crime lab is still there. So if something occurs in the township and requires possibly the sheriff, the sheriff may be coming from Chesapeake, New England, anywhere in the county. If you get a situation where, and I've said this before, the bad guys are in a business, if you will. And like any good businessman, they go where business is good. So if they know Bridgeport doesn't have any police officers, it makes it a lot easier for them to do some of the things that some of them choose to do. So I guess it's good to have that protection and let the bad guys, if you will, know that Bridgeport's not a good place to do business. Yes, sir?
Lynn Chinese, 6030 Great River View. I just want a sort of a point of information. When our policemen are used outside of the township, do they get compensated because they were over on Bay and Tippett was writing seatbelt tickets here a couple weeks ago? Do they get compensated by that area? Just how does that work?
Well, I'll let Dave explain that.
That's a federal grant through the office, the highway safety planning. So yes, all that money is reimbursed at Bridgeport.
Do we get very many federal grants like that?
Yes, Saginaw County gets them and then they divide them out to all the area police departments. And just on another note on that too, with the traffic grants, there's often times that additional officers are assigned to the township of Bridgeport for those type of grants too. We have seatbelt grants in Bridgeport, drunk driving grants in Bridgeport where other outside agencies come and assist us.
But now, when I drove through Bridgeport, there were numerous police officers from various of the city, the sheriff, other communities that were here, working with us to help enforce the seatbelt laws. Anyone else like to make a, speak against?
Gornobat, 2215 California. I'm really disappointed that some people, knowing that this was an opening week... I'm really disappointed that you people, knowing that this was the opening weekend of deer season, will even have a meeting like this. You know that the people that could be here aren't here. And for all of you to know that this is the opening weekend of deer season, to try to run this down the taxpayer's nose and the ears and whatever else you're trying to do. They'd send that letter out, that letter should have been sent out before the election. If you'd have sent that letter out before the election, you'd have got it stuck somewhere that wouldn't be with a bunch of yeses, I'll tell you that. You hoodwink people and then you hold this meeting on the opening weekend of deer season when you know all the men are up north. Now, just because you people don't go and the cops don't go and all these firmers you got sitting back in here, they don't go deer hunting, but they're all in favor of it. All our people are in favor. Because they work for a living and they get a chance to go deer hunting and they go. And you had the, you got the balls to have this meeting on the opening weekend of deer season. I think you're disgusting, the whole bunch of you.
Thank you.
And that letter that you sent out is a hoodwink job if I've ever seen one. People, I bet it, I read it five times before I made my first phone call. And after five times of reading it, I still couldn't figure out what it said. And then I talked to five people after they read it five times. So then we get together, three or four of us, and we try to iron this thing out. If you had an attorney draw this up, my opinion of attorney is a good attorney is a dead attorney. That's a good attorney. And I've felt that way since 1980. If you get rid of, if you shoot ninety percent of the attorneys in our country, you'll get eighty percent of the politicians and our whole country would run just as smooth as wine. That's my opinion of you and your attorneys that you have draw this up. And then to have this meeting on the opening weekend of deer season is hogwash.
Just a point of clarification, Mr. Novak.
You're supposed to be able to hear what everybody's saying.
Mr. Novak, excuse me.
You can't hear what you're saying, Augie. You had these three people.
Does anyone have any problem hearing me?
Not you. You have any trouble hearing me, any of us? And I don't need a speaker.
Regrettably not.
When Marilyn gave that big speech about Vanessa the other day, she pulled that mic right up there and we heard every word of what she said.
Let's stick to the subject. Now, you accused us of having the meeting when people are up deer hunting like we intentionally did that.
I sit right underneath that speaker, right in here.
That is pure hogwash. There's a timeframe that the meeting had to be done. Now, there's two board members sitting up at this table that were deer hunting that came back for this meeting. And they weren't particularly happy about that either, but they came back.
And I really don't like to be pointed at.
Well, you should have had it today.
Norm, I really don't like to be told that none of us really care.
Well, you should have stayed away, then the meeting wouldn't have been held.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Would anyone else like to speak again?
Good afternoon, my name's Bob McCray, 4210 Cass River Drive. My question is this. This young fellow came up and he said that he might be violating the Constitution and may open himself up to litigation. My question is this. If you lose in the court, are you going to be responsible, are the taxpayers for this situation?
Well, one more time, sir. All of this was run, regardless of what your opinion of attorneys or not, by an attorney who handles municipalities, who is an expert in the field. And that is the direction that we took.
Okay.
Okay.
I understand.
Now, his points that he made will be taken into consideration and we'll go from there.
Thank you very much.
If we find out that there was somehow violation, whatever, we'll do whatever is necessary to correct them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak again?
Hi, David. My name is Daniel Gueyette, I live at 2129 California Avenue.
What was your name again, sir?
Daniel Gueyette.
Could you spell that?
G-U-I-E-T-T-E.
Thank you.
Now, I don't, I have a couple questions. Number one, if you have the same lawyer that dealt with the bridge, you might want to think about getting another lawyer. Because if you lose that case, all right? Number two, I got the letter yesterday in the mail for this meeting. You sent it to Beaverton, Michigan. Why did you not want me to come? I, I'm just asking.
The letters were sent to the address is on record.
Okay, my address on, you send me my taxes and you send me my water bill?
The county sends the taxes.
Oh, okay, who sends my water bill? You guys. So if my address is correct for my water bill, shouldn't it be correct for this letter that you sent?
It should be, we'll check into that. I don't have any reason, but we'll check.
I can assure you that it wasn't sent to Beaverton or wherever, so even if you're concerned.
Okay, well, as far, I'm on a fixed income. I make less than $700 a month. Every time you guys want to do a special assessment, it always goes on the winter tax, which is the highest tax for me. I do the best I can to try to survive. The disability that I'm on is no fault of mine, it was a chemical I was allergic to from where I worked, which caused quite a bit of nerve damage. Every time somebody calls the police in my area, the state police come to answer the calls. So why does Bridgeport need more police officers when the state police are answering the calls? I've got people using drugs.
Can I answer that?
Yeah.
There's a good chance at the time that our officer is possibly over at jail taking somebody over there or they're involved in another call.
What about when the state police come and then all of a sudden your officer shows up right behind him? You have to answer that one.
State showing up before my officers because my officers are tied up?
Five minutes? Five minutes before?
Turn the mic up, Dave, please.
If the state police are responding before my officers, it's because my officers are tied up.
And I said five minutes? Five minutes? There was a police officer pulled up across the street or down the road from where I live because my neighbor and I had a dispute. The person who entered the phone, the call was the state police. Two minutes later, your deputy showed up.
My officer, probably because my officer was tied up.
In two minutes? He followed the state trooper down the road?
Sir, they clear the calls as quickly and as efficiently as they can to take the next call off. They can only take one call at a time.
Okay. How come there's nothing being done with all the drug dealers?
Mr. Littlejohn's making other comments and I can't hear a word we're saying because he keeps opening his mouth.
How come there's nothing being done with the drug dealers in California?
We try to handle all the calls that we can. We work closely with Bay and that, which is the local drug. Okay, but we have to follow the same laws, the same rules that everyone else has to follow. Again, we have limited manpower, that's why we requested the assessment for the two. We've requested, that's why we're requesting two police officers because the number of police officers that we currently have is still down compared to where we were before the layoffs of 2010. We're not asking for above and beyond where we have ever been staffed. We're just trying to get back to where we were staffed prior to the layoffs of 2010. So we can better address the needs of the community.
Okay, can you do it on the summer taxes where it's more easier for people who are on fixed incomes to pay it? Instead of the winter tax? The winter taxes, you guys are killing us. My house is only worth $12,000. It was assessed, I got the assessment. But yet I'm paying the taxes on assessment for a $17,000 home? You figured that one out?
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak against this assessment? Would anyone else like to speak against the police assessment?
My name is Joel Allen, I live at 6020 Rodell Road. I, when I got the letter, I felt the same as some of the other guys. When I heard about the meeting here, I felt, well, that's a bum rap too because it was deer hunting, something that I enjoy doing. I know you want to raise up the assessment and things like that, but my wages haven't gone up. Taxes go up and I understand inflation goes up, but wages don't go up. So, I don't know, I'm just simple enough, maybe call it Dave Ramsey plan. I just live within a budget. And, you know, when, when things, when we lost the things by this state, I understand that hurt. But we've survived and I wish we could get back there. But it hasn't happened. And I just still think we can still live within the budget. It's just cutting up. That's the way I feel about it. I have, no fault of my own, I have two properties. I've never been able to sell my house. So I have, I have a good renter, he's been in there nine years. I haven't raised any rent on there. You know, he's a good renter, I don't think he can afford more and he takes good care of the place. But the rent that I receive from it, for three months of it, it goes just to taxes. You know, I thought, I thought, and that was, now it's paid off, so it's much easier, but still I have three months of rent that just goes nothing but taxes. I know that taxes will go up on things like that. But what bothers me is that we'll have something come up for the police department, we'll have something come up for the fire department, then undoubtedly we'll have something come up for the school and then there's some other things. And I'm thinking, I just felt like, sort of like this guy. Here we are, Christmas, that's the time when people like to spend money on their family. I just think it's a bum rap to get assessed in. I can see during the summertime, you have your, you know, your income tax comes in. So you do have a little bit extra money. I did feel very, very cheated out when, you know, not knowing some of these things ahead of time before the election. I just, I just thought, man, that just doesn't seem wise. I also feel like the gentleman said about here, the litigation. I thought the whole thing with that bridge, I love the way the bridge looked, it looks great. But I thought, I don't want us to get stuck with something messed up where we spent a lot of money and a lot of litigation and things like that. So I, you know, that bothers me. I know there was something else that I was going to say. I like all of you guys. I think I, I know all of you guys, you know, I know Jim personally. And, you know, I got to talk to a lot of you. I like it. But I also feel like when you do some things, it seems like you take in more consideration the people that are on staff, whether they be the police department or the, or the fire department, more than the people. But I do understand that you want to take care of the community, I understand that. But I think you're going to need to put more weight into the people themselves on there. I also felt, I happened to be over at a neighbor's, neighbor's house that I was painting, painting for a guy over, over in Bridgeport and this was on a Sunday afternoon. And one of the police officers came up passing out, you know, wanted to think. And so I asked him, I said, I said, now is this a news thing? And he said, well, I don't know about the police, the police, I think, he said, no, excuse me, the fire department, that would be something new. He said, but the fire department, from what he said, was that it was an assessment, there was an assessment, but it's run out and so this is not a new assessment. I'm just telling you what the person told me. I said, so I'm not going to have to paint anything new, this has already been on there, but it's just run out? And the guy said, yes. I won't mention the police officer, but the police officer is present. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak again?
Edward Likes of Orsby, 1622 Dixie Highway. I see two things that are a concern here with regard to the, from what, the way I read the statute, I don't think you can use that money for actually hiring personnel. And it sounds like that's what you're intending to do. So that, as far as, I think that's only mentioned with regard to the police department, it would be for hiring personnel. And the statute says that it's for purchasing and housing equipment, for the operation equipment. For both, I guess you could say, well, the guy's sitting in the car, he's operating equipment. So maybe you try to justify it that way, but I, I don't, and that would be an argument. I'm sure that an attorney could make, attorneys love to argue, they get paid for that. And then the other thing, I think the public does, I got no problem with paying an assessment that's legitimately presented and voted on. But in this particular case, whether it was intentional or unintentional, there was a misrepresentation made to the voters of what you actually want to do now when you include this other language of the right to increase it. Now, I know you have said at the start here that you have no intention of increasing it. But we're talking about a ten-year assessment and there's going to be new board members and there's going to be new things happen and, and, you know, I went through this once before with regard to a sewer where we were told we wouldn't have to pay anything to hook up. And then four years later, we ended up getting sued by the township and being forced to, they tried to force us to hook up. And so, you know, when they say, and say there's no intention now, that doesn't make me really comfortable. And we went through this a few years back with regard to a similar assessment procedure where we went out and collected the petitions to make it a valid question. And the township didn't even want to accept the petitions, we had to get a process server. You know, prior to getting the process server and presenting the petitions, the supervisor at that time called and says, Ed, don't worry about this, we've decided to table it. And we're not going to do anything with it until next year. There was two questions I had there. First of all, I thought, well, Jim, is how can we decide to table it without a public meeting? And he kind of took a lot of things on himself. But then when the public hearing actually happened, the attorney sat right there and that was Myers, David Myers, I'm not sure which it is. And he said that, he says, we got some problems here, we got these petitions. And he says, first of all, we got to find out if the language is right. Second of all, we got to find out if there's a sufficient number of signatures. And then I forget something else. And he said, had it not been for these petitions, we would have, this would be passed today. So what he said three days later was in direct conflict with what the supervisor told me. Anyway, these things make me a little uncomfortable when you say you have no intention now for the future. On the subject of attorneys, the, I've always felt that a good attorney was an attorney that would keep you out of court. And that's the best attorney, keeps you out of court. And when the petition, if the petition language was actually generated by an attorney and it didn't tell us that there would be it didn't tell us that there would be the subject of a ten percent increase available, if he omitted that, he could have put it in there. And if he omitted that, it's, I would say that goes beyond bordering on a misrepresentation. And you gotta wonder why he did it. Attorneys like to argue. And it would have just been so much better if that would have been in there. There would be no, no squawk at all, you know, if it had been in there. But it wasn't. And so, what you have to ask yourselves individually, Jim, Walter, Augie, Darlene, Farrell, Heather, you have to ask yourselves individually, do you want your name associated with continuing a misrepresentation to the public where the public voted on something and now you somehow can use that to rubber stamp, that, that vote to rubber stamp you doing something else? And that's, you can only ask yourself that question. We'll see what the answer is.
I can answer that now. There's no intention at all of any misrepresentation. And going back to a couple of comments that you made, sir, there was a point where this, an assessment was considered, that's true. And many people got up to the microphone and said they didn't have any problem with a millage. And they had a problem with the township just assessing someone, the residents. But they didn't have any problem supporting the police and the fire. So those very same people, and many of them got up to the microphone tonight, spent hours going out and campaigning against it. While they stood here and said that they didn't have any problem with it, they just wanted a millage. Now, you know yourself, you know yourself with a millage. When you set a millage, it's for X number of dollars or X number of years. With an assessment, it can be reduced. Each year, the board has to vote on, continue the assessment as it is. They could reduce the assessment, or they could increase it by no more than ten percent without going to a public forum or public hearing like we're having now. Now, I can only tell you that we have no intention of increasing it. And I hear what you're saying, ten years is a long time. But if, you know, we understand elections and a lot of the federal and state officials when they're campaigning like, like to make glorious promises. But you heard our governor talk about money is going to the cities or townships, whatever, in the state, for police and fire. You know, they're gonna work real hard on doing that. And you hear the federal government, they talk about it also. Now, if by some slim chance they were to give us some money, some federal or state monies, then, like I said, we would take into consideration that dollar amount. And when it came to the end of that particular year, then we would reduce it by a like amount. In other words, calculate how much that of money is, how much the assessment would bring in, and reduce it accordingly. Now, I guess I can't say any more than that. And as far as anybody would link in, you want to, you know, you can say that if you want to, and I guess it makes for, for good talk in the coffee shop or wherever that may be. But that is absolutely not true.
Well, first of all, I, I take personal. I didn't make that representation that we were being put, what I said was that if an attorney drew that language and left part of it out, I would question, why did he leave it out?
And as far as laws, you said, I was like, you know.
Left out? And do you think it would have, I think the public would like to know what they're voting on and then get what they voted on. And, you know, we're now, somehow, if there's a, we're at a point here where we're gonna say, well, we're gonna give them maybe not what they voted on, but we'll give them something that's similar. And we got every intention of being right, good, fair about it. That's all, well, good to say, but the point of it is, it's not what the public voted on. And I don't recall seeing any notices published. I don't recall getting anything in the mail that would have alerted the public to your intention of doing this without an election, rather, you said, we're gonna have an election. So there was no need whatsoever. And, well, then the public can decide. But you're not offering what you had the voters vote on. And that's the rope right there. And again, it's gonna go back to individually, you're gonna have to decide. You want your name hooked to, individually, you're gonna have to decide. Do you want your name hooked to something where a large percentage of the population knows now that you're voting on something that they misunderstood?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Augie, can I say something?
If you come up to the microphone here, please.
Okay, I go by the name of Carlos Citizen, online. And I've been videotaping every meeting since April. And not one person here tonight has shown up at one of these meetings. Everything that they're talking about tonight has been discussed at the meetings. I mean, the information's out there. Nobody shows up, nobody cares. The one meeting in July, they all said this tape over here was excellent. Every bit of information you needed, and nobody was there but me and my mother. Okay, so they didn't hoodwink anybody. I've been trying to get the information out. They've been trying. Nobody shows up. Nobody does anything. Do you notice that constant contact, the meetings were public? So, I mean, it's up there. You go to my blog, you can go online to YouTube and watch the July meeting. Everything is explained.
We didn't know that.
Nobody knew that. Not July.
Okay, thank you.
Not in July.
Point of information? I'm just wondering if you're speaking for or against?
Actually, I'm for. That's why I've been trying to get the information out. No, I was just trying to.
See, lots of people don't go online.
Yeah, I know, but it was in the papers.
Let's keep it verbal, please. Would anyone else like to speak against the special assessment? Would anyone else like to speak against the special assessment? Anyone else, one last time, would like to speak against the special assessment? Public hearing is now closed.
I'd like to speak. I'd like to. John Zaitler, thirty-eight, thirty-three, Jim Drive. Only thing that bothers me about this is the ten percent you guys can raise this every year. And we don't have any say in it. Is that true?
According to Public Act thirty-three, that is correct. And again, it was written by the state legislators, it's not something here we're reading up, sir.
Who wrote it, I'm just saying. Ten percent, you guys are gonna blank check, probably nine point nine percent every year. That's the only thing that bothers me.
I understand that. I understand. And I, you know, I can say until cows come home that there's no intent on our part whatsoever to do that because.
I've never seen anything go down. My taxes don't go down.
Well, we don't, a lot of that, we don't have any control over.
I'm just saying, things don't go down.
College and those other things, but I believe they're what we're done too, so. I understand, I hear what you're saying, sir.
That's my big concern.
I understand, and I appreciate what you're saying. I think I close with, go ahead.
I'm looking at Bridgeport, I'm a light, and I'm not.
Name and address, sir?
Thirty-nine forty-nine Turner Drive. I work at the post office in Midland. I'm not having an increase, I've had a decrease.
Give me your name, sir.
Dave Truckner. And I don't know about anybody here, if they've got pay raises or not, but I've got a decrease. And I'm getting taxed and taxed and taxed. And as a working person, I'm getting tired of getting taxed. Got people, got people sit home, not working, getting a handout. And I'm a working, hardworking man, and I'm getting tired of working around the clock so you guys can figure out what to tax. I mean, I'm sorry, but nobody else in here is getting big raises. I mean, somewhere you're gonna have to look about how, where to save money. And it's just not there. You know what? Don't have any ideas to raise taxes. I mean, it just, it's getting, it's hard for everybody, and it just, it's getting to be pretty tiring to come up here and say, hey, enough is enough. I mean, nobody's, I mean, sit around, make plans on how to tax people. I mean, people are working hard enough to try to make ends meet. That's all I have to say.
One more time, would anyone like to speak against the special assessment? Hearing none, will now close public hearing on the special assessment for the police. Thank you all for your comments. Now we'll open up the public hearing for a special assessment for the fire department. Anyone like to speak in favor?
Terry Duffett, thirty-two seventy-five, Tom Line, Rhode. I'm in favor of the fire department because if we don't have fire protection, my insurances are gonna go higher. And if you don't keep a class and a certain class on your fire department, guess what? This little bit of a tax that I, or assessment that I have to pay for either the fire or the police is nothing. That's why I'm in favor of it.
Hi, I'm Ron Sinclair. Live at thirty-eight fifty-eight State Street in Bridgeport. And as I've tried to think through this, it'll be clear because I'm speaking in favor, that I did vote for these assessments. But it was for, I think, a self-serving reason, very similar to yours. Wasn't that I was worried about my insurance, I didn't think about that. I thought in the long run, excuse me, did I say thirty-eight fifty-eight State Street? I don't own a house, but I do own a mortgage. And so, I thought in the long run, as I pay off that mortgage, my value would be better sustained in a community that had adequate police and fire protection. So I get it for me, but I think it'll benefit others too.
Would anyone else like to speak in favor of the fire assessment? Would anyone else like to speak in favor of the fire assessment? One more time, anyone like to speak in favor of the fire assessment? Okay, now, is there anyone who'd like to speak against the fires, special assessment for the fire department?
Josh Dalton, sixty-nine seventeen East Curtis Road. I'm gonna go a different approach this time, 'cause I could quote case law to you all day long, but obviously, none of you have done your research or homework on this, and you're leaving it up to the attorneys, so I will not go that route. However, what I will tell you is.
Are you an attorney?
Pardon me?
Are you an attorney?
No, I'm not, but I'm an informed citizen. Okay? I don't know if that has any bearing on what I'm about to say here, but I'll proceed anyway. So, I appreciate the job that you guys do. It's a tough job, I'll say that. And it goes for the volunteer firemen and for the police as well. I'm not against any of you, okay? But that doesn't exempt you from making the tough decisions and being informed by the position that you hold, okay? So let me proceed with this. Two thousand nine, I don't know if any of you are here on the board or not, a special assessment came into play, and overwhelmingly, support showed up against it, okay? Two thousand ten, you put a millage together, it was voted down. Two thousand twelve, same millage comes up, voted down. And now here we are, back to another special assessment. Do you know why you guys chose a special assessment this time? Does anyone know what House Bill forty-one forty-seven is? Does anybody know that? Anybody on the board know what forty-one forty-seven is?
I don't have them all memorized. No, go ahead.
Okay, I'll enlighten you. Forty-one forty-seven was a House bill that was submitted and passed in favor of a flat tax. What that did was give case law to overturn previous tribunal decisions against it, okay? So now your lawyer is knowing, because of case law, he can push this through. That doesn't make it right. There's a lot of laws out there, there's a lot of things I can do under the law, okay? That doesn't mean it's ethically or morally correct, period. Your job is to uphold what the citizens want, make the tough decisions. They've already told you, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, and two thousand twelve, they didn't want this. Not that they don't want the services, but they don't want to pay additional for it, okay? I'm already paying for these services, okay? Now, I would love to have better things at home myself. I'd love a brand-new tractor. But I can't afford it, so guess what? I do what I can to get by with what I have, just like all the rest of these people out here. And that's fiscal responsibility, okay? By and large, fiscal responsibility. We love a brand-new ladder truck and a pumper truck, right? But those are diesels, and they go for millions of miles. And they're what cared for, and they're put into buildings that are climate controlled. And you know what? It's probably a little loose in the steering, and it's not as great as it was when it was first, but it's got a lot of miles left on it. Maybe we want to be the township who does with what we have, okay? That's what's important. We have to look at what's important here. And I don't think that any of you are taking into consideration. The voters have told you what they want, and you're not listening to them. I can quote case law all day to you, and you don't understand what I'm saying. And that's okay. But being uninformed is not okay, all right? So here's my promise to you. If you don't take my inquiries seriously, I promise you, I will not stop at Saginaw Commissioner's Office, and I will not stop at the tribunal. And I will make sure all these people behind me that support me get on board as well, okay? So I'm serious when I tell you to look into what I'm saying, 'cause I'm not up here just blowing smoke.
Anyone else like to speak against the fire assessment? Could we have the conversation stopped, please, out there? Distracting, please.
Thirty-eight hundred twenty-eight sixty-one Diamond Street.
Yeah, maybe tip it down a little bit.
Yes. I'm kind of in an awkward position because I know we need police and fire services. What this, playing by the rules that were set by the state legislature, provide us all with a complicated mess to sort out, where our country has gone in recent years. I'm sorry for my short breath, that's a problem. So we wind up not in support of, it's not that we want to oppose these issues, a lot of us, some of us do. But we're winding up having to solve them in unconstructive means because of what this state legislature has done, what the Congress has or hasn't done. We can go on and on. Our politics really have hit the, the rubber has hit the road. And so we wind up voting against things that we know maybe we need, or we sound unsupportive to people who are trying to serve us. And I apologize for that, that I have to get up here and say again, it would have been better to pass a property tax millage to allow those who have property tax exemption because of poverty. Because I have to fight for those people because... Because I have to fight for those people because I've spent years advocating for those kinds of clients. We're, we're, we're in a conundrum and I don't know how to answer it and I kinda feel sorry for you and I feel sorry for all of us because we cannot be constructive.
Twenty, Road Down. I like our chief, he's a nice guy, I really do. But I do feel, feel that, um, you know, when I see vehicles that are in the garage, they're taken good care of, I, it just seems to me, I may be wrong, I know there's wear and tear, but it just seems to me that they're well cared for. I know before, he's mentioned about suits and outfits and oxygen, I, I don't understand that, uh, that we need upgrade bills. I don't know if it's, if it's true or not. I was talking to, um, somebody today and I said, I said, "Are you gonna be going to the meeting?" And they said, they said, "No," but, uh, they were disturbed. They said that, and I don't, I don't know if it's part of the, part of the master plan to, to build the new station, they mentioned, mentioned that. I thought, I thought, "If there is, I'm, I'm not for that, it seems like, you know, we could do." But, like I said, I, I don't know, it's just what, but somebody mentioned on, on that, I hadn't heard anything on, on that. But if that was one of the things, I thought, uh, I'm not for, for that, you know, uh, just building the things like, like that. The same neighbor, they mentioned that, uh, their, they, their next-door neighbor is one of the, one of the fire, the fire, volunteer fire, firemen. And he was not for it, he said, "There's plenty of money in the budget, but they want to use it in a different way." And I don't know, like I said, I, I, I just don't know. But when I hear things like that, I'm thinking, you know, it's like what I said with the police thing. I would just say, like, just live within our budget and eventually, things are gonna go differently. Then, then I, I wouldn't mind, mind, I, I wouldn't mind that. I just turned sixty this year, I know that in, you know, a few years, I'm gonna have to retire and I feel bad for people that are, that are retired when, when, you know, now you're taxed on the pension and I'm, I'm thinking, they, I, I still get taxed regularly, but, you know, for people that are on fixed budget and if they're retired or they walk, their taxes have already gone up on, on them with the, with the state, you know, tax in their pension. But I just always think, it's always these, the little things that just keep on adding up to fund, you got, you got a lot of, a lot of extra things that are taken. So I just, you know, I just, again, I like us to live within the budget.
Part of the, the, the monies and, and, uh, you know, if you've been at meetings, uh, when we spoke about that and the chief Nelson has talked about, necessary things they needed at the fire department. One of the comments that I had made at the time that it would be a tough sell for some people because they drive by and they look at a pretty fire station that's, from outside appearances, looks like it's in really nice shape, the firemen doing excellent job, um, cleaning up their fire trucks and shining them and all that kinda stuff, but much of the equipment, uh, gets to a certain age, has to be replaced. I guess I could have Chief Nelson go through, we've had many structural problems with the building itself that have not been addressed and need to be addressed. You mentioned a new fire station, there's absolutely nothing in any of that that's any consideration for a good fire station. So if anybody's saying that, that is totally incorrect. And just one thing I wanted to say, frequently, I've been looking down and my eye is hurting very much and when I look up, I catch the bright lights and it hurts my eye very much. So, I apologize for that, it's nothing, I'm ignoring anybody. I guess, we have, what's, what's the dollar figure on the repairs for the fire, fire station itself, Chief?
For renovation over a ten-year period based on what we're projecting, over half a million dollars total.
And that's not for a spanking brand-new fire station, but to maintain the one that we have. And if, if you, the gentleman that you talked to that said we got this pot of money someplace, if you could get ahold of him and have him know where that pot of money's at, I'd be more than happy to, you know, to pick that out, so. Does anyone else like to make a comment, uh, speaking against the fire?
Edward Lysikorski, sixty-eight twenty-two Dixie Highway. This still all comes back down to the same thing. I think there's probably nobody in the room that wouldn't acknowledge that there was some confusion here with regard to, uh, what the people thought they were voting for and now what we're thinking about giving them. And, um, I, I can't help but think that it wouldn't be the end of the world if you had resubmit this to the voters with an accurate question and see if they wanted it. And, um, if, um, and so you get, gets back to the same thing, it's not you as individuals to ask yourselves whether you wanna go forward in the confusion. I have, I have, oh, that's it. Best attorney is one to keep you out of court.
Well, no matter what happens, there's always people willing to take you to court nowadays, you, you know that, you were on the board, in fact, I think you are. Anyone else like to speak against? Hey, anyone else like to speak against? One last time, anyone else would like to speak against the fire, excuse me, the assessment? You already spoke on it once, sir, is there something different?
Yeah, absolutely is. A few questions I'd like to bring up is, um, you're right, litigation is definitely expensive and I don't think anybody wants to go down that road and I don't think anyone here really has that intent, uh, and doesn't wanna see that happen. But the question remains that you haven't really answered the question of why are you exempting parcels that are vacant versus parcels that have homesteads on them or structures? How does a parcel that is vacant not receive a benefit by having fire protection?
Who would pay the bill on a vacant lot?
It's an assessment and that's what a special assessment is, you're including it in that district for a special benefit. And how am I seeing the benefit different than the vacant lot? In fact, by you taking and making me solely responsible and putting that tax burden on me, what you're in essence doing is you're creating a tax lien on my property, which is devaluing my property and actually putting a benefit on the vacant land, increasing the value. That's what you're doing. And that is not what special assessments were intended for.
I could partly answer that. When, when we, when we looked at the millage previously, one of the concerns, and I understand that, from a lot of the people that own eighty acres, two hundred acres, six hundred acres, whatever, they were being assessed on all of that property, which really doesn't need police protection or not too much of a chance of a fire on a vacant field. So that was one of their concerns and that's why they expressed that they were gonna vote against the millage because they had to pay taxes on empty property.
Which is definitely understood from their perspective, however, they're getting a vote on something that I'm shouldering all the tax burden on, okay?
But they're still paying the same amount, sir, because you have a house. I'm assuming you have a house and you have a land.
I do.
They have a house and they have a land and they, they will pay the assessment on that, similar, same thing as you're gonna pay.
But if I have multiple houses, I'll pay that on all of them.
That's true, and if it was a millage, you'd pay the millage on all of them.
Exactly, but you're, you're basically putting me at tax...
I could pay the eighteen percent, uh...
A tax disadvantage.
Non-homestead property to parcels.
Okay. The, the other situation that you're doing by doing this is, special assessments are for a, a special benefit, that's what the intent is. How am I receiving a special benefit? Everybody is going to receive the same benefit I am, but I'm shouldering the entire tax burden. That's not opinion, that's fact, sir. I'm going to pay for it and so are everybody else who has a structure on property. But yet, everybody that owns property in the township border and anybody that comes to our thoroughfare and uses our facilities will get police and fire protection. That's what, not what special assessments were made for. And you're not looking at that and you're not taking that into consideration. And that's what you were elected to do.
Thank you. One more time, would anyone like to speak against the fire assessment? Anyone like to speak against it? Would anyone like to speak against it? Hearing none, public hearing is now closed on the fire system. Thank you for your comments. Moving along, now, public comment. Would anyone like to make a public comment? Would anyone like to make a public comment? Would anyone like to make a public comment?
Department of Labor, twenty-two fifteen California. Being that you're all aware of the package that you have, according to, uh, New Business, there's gonna be a amendment to nine-one-one, the Saginaw County inter, inter-local agreement. Does anybody know what that is? I'd like to know before you go ahead and vote like you do yes on everything. You're supposed to know now, everybody, you're, you're supposed to have all that stuff now, you knew all about this four days ago. Now, can somebody just explain it to me, what it is?
When we get there, we'll explain it, sir. When we get there, we'll explain it.
Well, then, then I won't, I'm not gonna be able to ask no questions. This is public comment, that's how you, that's how stupid this thing is. You got public comment, you got the beginning of everything, it's at the end, so at the end of the evening, we can ask what's, what you voted on and what you did this for.
Well, at the end of it, it already be passed and, or not passed, whatever, and that would be over with, so.
The problem that I got with the piece of the fire that the public comments about is all the same thing. You seven people, when we had them, you're supposed to be the boss. The police chief's not the boss of the police department, you people are. Fire chief's not the boss of the fire department, you people are. And if you don't, people don't put your thumb down on what these guys do and how they do it, I'm tired of seeing my fire chief vehicles down at Tompey Restaurant every day. And then they get a call and they tear off down the Dixie Highway fifty miles an hour. So I'm on my way down to Kroger, I said, "Well, there must be a big fire somewhere." I come by the fire barn, all the vehicles are in there, except the one the chief was driving like an idiot. And then he says, "We gotta have money, 'cause we're gonna have to make these repairs, so we gotta have a assessment." I'm disgusted with the way they use my vehicles.
Personal comments are not necessary, sir.
Is that what?
The personal comments are not necessary.
Well, he's fire chief and he was driving it, I seen him. And he interrupted his lunch.
Believe me, there, there are idiots other than in the fire department.
They shouldn't be brown-bagging their lives, they shouldn't be down there at Tompey Restaurant.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you for your comment.
Well, yeah, I hope you do, but you don't, you don't, you don't listen when I talk, that's your problem.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to make a public comment? Nice to see you again there.
Edward Lysikorski, sixty-eight twenty-two Dixie Highway. On the issue of, of public comment, uh, you know, you mentioned here that nobody comes to the meetings. I used to be a regular to meetings, you may recall.
You used to be on the board.
Well, I used to be on the board too, but I was being here or there, but as far as the public comment goes, it would be nice if you'd reconsider the way, uh, if you could let somebody ask a question during an issue. I know they used to do that, uh, before, they'd have a public comment at the beginning, at the, at the beginning, and then when they're covering a particular issue, whether it be a culvert or if somebody had a question, they could raise their hand, ask the question, get it answered. In fact, I remember when Steve used to, uh, when he was the supervisor, he would say at the beginning, on public comment, we're not, he didn't want any, you know, he preferred not to have any comments about anything that's on the agenda, he said, "Ask questions when we're there." And, and the way I, to me, it just doesn't, uh, there's nothing to participate when you can't ask a question and that's why you haven't seen much of me, 'cause it just, there's no way to participate, there's no way to ask a question. Something, something comes up that you're gonna do and if, if I don't know what it is, but then when you bring it up, I can't ask the question. And it's, it's frustrating. Thank you.
Yes, hi, Sue.
Sue Schlocker, thirty-seven oh seven South Tower Lane. If these people were at the meetings, they would know that several times, 'cause I come to them, I have interrupted with questions, statements, suggestions, um, at the DDA and the township, doesn't matter. And another thing, if we don't have the correct number of firefighters, the correct number of police officers, all these people that are complaining of no jobs and not having any money like, you know, the rest of us, uh, these big box stores wouldn't even come to this area because all the businesses look at these two departments. And that's why the assessment was important.
Thank you.
My name is Daniel Gaya, twenty-one twenty-nine California Avenue, Saginaw. I'd like to answer your question. I used to work down in Nobite, uh, that's Wicks and Long Lake area. I was a cabinet owner, I had a cabinet shop. And a friend of mine owned, uh, a big two-week home. When Velasquez Pickles was for sale, he came up to buy, purchase that building to bring jobs up to this area. And our board members turned him down. At that present time, he could've employed fifteen hundred people. Because they turned him down, he ended up building a new building down in Nobite and now he employs three thousand individual workers, he starts them out at fourteen dollars an hour. If our township would not vote these businesses down, we would have people come in with money. And, excuse, I started to work for Bridgeport Township. I was on the DPW Water Department back in nineteen eighty-four. I worked flood, when the, when the Cas River flooded over, we worked twelve hours straight. I know the hard work that you people put in for the township, I was one of them. When the union come in, I got laid off. I was working what they classify as full-time, part-time, and I was working fifty-eight hours a week. When the union came in, they told the township, "There's no such thing as part, part, full-time, part-time, as long as somebody's working fifty-eight hours a week." I ended up getting laid off.
Hello, my name is Alberta Colpepper. I live at thirty-four oh five Creekwood Drive. We have had an increase in our sewage this year. We got an increase on sidewalks. And in my neighborhood, it looked like Beirut. Looked like everybody's sidewalk was pulled up in my neighborhood at four hundred and fifty dollars a square. Looked like everybody's sidewalk was pulled up in my neighborhood at four hundred and fifty dollars a square. That goes to the taxpayer also. If that's the cost, I'm not for sure, but this is what some of the neighbors told me. I don't know the exact cost of what each square was, but it's going to the homeowner, which I always thought that this was, this was a public domain. I never knew that you had, the homeowners had to pay for sidewalks. Now we're asking for the police and the fire department also. I am not, what you say, economically deprived in any way. We've been retired for twenty-five years, but we're secure. But what I am concerned about is the young families that's trying to raise their children, pay hard notes and house notes, and we're studying inundating them with taxes. That, that is my concern, because a lot of young people don't want to move to this area because of that. We need to find some other ways that you can be able to support public services without constantly taxing the homeowner. And that's my primary concern. And I am a commissioner here in Bridgeport and have been for twelve years. But I am concerned with young people raising a family and trying to take care of their family and take care of the burden of taxes that's being put on them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Anyone else like to make a public comment? Anyone else like to make a public comment? When was the last time anyone else liked to make a public comment? Public comment is now closed. Moving on, New Business. Resolution R fourteen twenty-four, the amendment to the nine-one-one Saginaw County inter-local agreement.
I would make the motion to approve Resolution R dash fourteen dash twenty-four, amending the Saginaw County nine-one-one inter-local agreement as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Resolution R fourteen twenty-two, amending the nine-one-one Saginaw County inter-local agreement. Anyone have any discussion? Rose, can you elaborate? Doran, don't leave now, we're doing talk about it.
All right, I'm gonna talk about it anyway. The nine-one-one inter-local agreement is an agreement amongst all municipalities, cities and townships.
Do you have a mic down though?
I've got it. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. The nine-one-one inter-local agreement with... Sorry, obviously no one's not interested, so I'll start one more time. The inter-local agreement with nine-one-one that they're asking for an amendment for tonight is a part of the agreement that agrees to members, residents of Saginaw Township appointed by Saginaw Township's Board of Trustees. What they're asking for in that agreement is that they change it to read two members being the township supervisor and the township manager for their designees. There's a request from Saginaw Township, all the municipalities and cities, as I was trying to say, in Saginaw County is under that inter-local agreement, and they're just asking that that change be made in that agreement. Does anybody have any questions? I don't know if I explained it very well.
Basically, all members, when they make any changes like that, all members have to approve.
Absolutely.
It really doesn't affect us.
Doesn't affect us.
Any way at all.
Exactly.
We have a roll call, please.
Yes, Wilson?
Yes.
Fair?
Yes.
Miller, yes.
LaShore?
Yes.
Secord?
Yes.
Towson?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. You know, we have a special assessment for the police department, Resolution R fourteen dash eighteen.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution R dash fourteen dash eighteen, establishing a special assessment district and confirming a special assessment role for police protection within the Charter Township of Bridgeport as presented.
Mr. Supervisor, would you read the complete resolution, please?
We haven't accepted it yet, so.
Could you read what you're voting on?
If you give me a chance, we'll do that, okay?
Can I have a second on that?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Resolution R dash fourteen dash eighteen. I would read it, but my eyes are bothering a little bit with the, I don't care whoever wants to read it, but appreciate it.
Bridgeport Charter Township Board Resolution R fourteen eighteen, establishing a special assessment district and confirming special assessment role for police protection within the township. At a special meeting of the Township Board of Bridgeport Charter Township Saginaw County, Michigan, held at Bridgeport Township Hall on the seventeenth day of November two thousand fourteen at six o'clock PM Eastern Daylight Standard Time. The following resolution says, "Whereas pursuant to Act thirty-three, Public Acts of Michigan under nineteen fifty-one, as amended Act thirty-three, as well as other statutory authority, the Township Board may establish a special assessment district and confirm a special assessment role for the provision of police protection within the township. And whereas pursuant to Act thirty-three, the Township provided due notice of a public hearing on the establishment of a special assessment district, the plans for proposed services, and the estimated cost of the proposed police protection services, and the confirmation of a special assessment role for the provision of police protection within the Bridgeport Township. And whereas the proposed special assessment district would include the entire unincorporated portion of the township. And whereas the electors within the proposed special assessment district approved the creation of the proposed special assessment district. And whereas this township supervisor or assessor has prepared a proposed special... A special assessment. Now therefore be resolved that the Township Board of Bridgeport Charter Township Saginaw County, Michigan, as follows: The Township Board establishes a special assessment district for police protection to be known as the Bridgeport Charter Township Police Special Assessment District, which shall include the entire unincorporated portion of the township. The Township Board approves the special assessments in the initial annual amount of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents. It determines that the special assessment reflected on the special assessment role prepared by the supervisor or assessor are in proportion to the benefits to be derived by the property as special assessed. The special assessment role to be known as Bridgeport Township Police Protection Special Assessment District, special assessment role, as prepared and reported to the, to the township by the township supervisor and assessor, and attached to exhibit A, is confirmed. The special assessment role shall be initially levied and collected together with the township's two thousand fourteen winter tax collections, and annually thereafter, if not, and not to exceed the one hundred and fifty-eight thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents in the first year, which maximum annual amount may be increased by the township, but not to exceed ten percent annually as determined by the Township Board without further notice after its regular budget hearing each year. The assessments shall be annually billed with winter taxes collected, collections, and shall be due no later than February fourteenth of each year. If any special assessment is not paid when due, the special assessment shall be considered delinquent and there, and there shall be collected a penalty rate of three percent, and interest to be added for each month or fraction of a month, if the special assessment remains unpaid. That'd be the same as your taxes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? We have a roll call, please.
Fair?
Yes.
LaShore?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Miller, yes. Secord?
Yes.
Towson?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Next, we have a resolution. Could we keep the conversation down, please? Some people want to hear. Next, we have a special police assessment, R fourteen nineteen. Resolution. Do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R dash fourteen dash nineteen, confirming a special assessment role for two thousand fourteen for police protection within the Charter Township of Bridgeport as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Special Assessment Resolution R fourteen dash nineteen. Again, would the clerk read it, please?
Bridgeport Township Board Resolution Number R fourteen nineteen, confirming a two thousand fourteen special assessment role for the police protection within the township. At a special meeting of the Township Board of Bridgeport Charter Township Saginaw County, Michigan, held in Bridgeport Township Hall on the seventeenth day of November two thousand fourteen at six o'clock. Whereas pursuant to public Act thirteen, or, sorry, thirty-three, Public Acts of Michigan of nineteen fifty-one, as amended Act thirty-three, as well as other statutory authority, the Township Board has previously established a special assessment district encompassing the entire township, and has previously confirmed a special assessment role for the police, provision of police protection within this township. And whereas the Township provided due notice of a public hearing on the confirmation of two thousand fourteen special assessment role for the provision of the police protection within the township. And whereas the estimated cost of providing police protection services within a district of the, during the two thousand fourteen fiscal year is one thousand, or, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents. And whereas the township supervisor has prepared a proposed special assessment role in the total amount of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents for assessments in two thousand fourteen, listing all the parcels of land to be assessed within the special assessment district, and the amount to be assessed against each parcel of land equal to thirty-seven dollars and eighty cents, which the Township Board will find, which the Township Board finds equitively in proportion to the whole sum to be levied against all parcels of land in the special assessment district as to the benefit to such parcel bears to the social benefit of all parcels of the land in the special assessment district. And whereas the supervisor or assessor affixed a certificate to the proposed special assessment role stating that, that he or she has, according to his or her best judgment, conformed in all respects to the directions contained in the Township Board's resolution and the statutes of the state of Michigan. And he or she reported the proposed special assessment role with his or her attached certificate to the Township Board. And whereas the Township Board conducted a public hearing at six o'clock PM November seventeenth, two thousand fourteen, at the Township Hall, to hear any objections, objections to the proposed special assessment district and the proposed special assessment role. Whereas, after hearing any objections and comments regarding the estimated costs and expenses and the proposed special assessment role, the Township Board finds that the estimated costs and expenses should be approved and the special assessment role should be confirmed as shown in the attached exhibit A. Now, therefore it be resolved that the Township Board of Bridgeport Charter Township of Saginaw County, Michigan, as followed. The Township Board approves at the estimated cost of the expenses of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents for the police protection within the district during the two thousand fourteen fiscal year. The Township Board approves the annual two thousand fourteen special assessments in the amount of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars four hundred and forty, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents. It determines that the special assessments reflected in the special assessment role prepared by the supervisor and assessor in proportion to the benefits to be derived by the properties. The special assessment role to be known as the Bridgeport Charter Township Police Protection Special Assessment District assessment role, as prepared and reported by the Township Board, the Township supervisor and assessor are here to attach as exhibit A. The special assessment role shall be levied and collected together with the township two thousand fourteen winter tax collections. The assessment shall be due no later than February fourteenth, two thousand fifteen. If any special assessment is not paid when due, the special assessment shall be considered delinquent and shall, and shall be collected with a, at a penalty rate of three percent, and the interest shall be added each month or a fraction of a month, if the special assessment remains unpaid. The assessments made in the special assessment role are hereby ordered and directed to be collected by the township clerk, and the township clerk shall deliver said, said special assessment role to the township treasurer with his or her warrant attached, commanding the treasurer to collect the assessments therein in accordance with the direction of the Township Board with respect thereto. And the treasurer is authorized and directed to collect, collect the amounts assessed as they become due pursuant to the terms of this resolution and the provisions of the applicable statutes of the state of Michigan. All prior resolutions and parts of the prior resolutions insofar as they conflict with the provisions of the resolution are hereby rescinded.
Okay, could we have a roll call, please?
LaShore?
Yes.
Secord?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Fair?
Yes.
Miller, yes. Towson?
Yes.
That motion is carried.
Next, we have a special assessment for the fire department, Resolution R fourteen dash sixteen. Do we have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution R dash fourteen dash sixteen, establishing a special assessment district and confirming a special assessment role for fire protection within the Charter Township of Bridgeport as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Special Assessment for the Fire Department Resolution R fourteen dash sixteen. Anyone on the board have any comments or questions, or whatever? Let me ask you this, uh... They're all pretty much the same, except one's fire one's, please. Raise your hand if you'd like to do the whole thing right again.
I'd just like to know what the total is for the fire department.
Okay, we'll read them all, that's fine.
No, I, I didn't need for you to read the whole thing, I just wondered what the total money figure was.
Can I do that? Okay, the total amount...
I guess it wasn't total amount.
Okay, the total amount would be one hundred and ninety thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. And, um, listing the parcels, land to be assessed with the special assessment district, and each parcel of land will be equal to forty-five dollars. And otherwise, everything else is pretty much the same, if you want me to reiterate.
That was thirty-seven eighty.
That's good, please. What's your total, ma'am?
The total? One hundred and ninety thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars, with each parcel being charged the forty-five dollars, or billed the forty-five dollars each year.
Thank you. Could we have a roll call, please?
Secord?
Yes.
Fair?
Yes.
LaShore?
Yes.
Miller, yes. Wilson?
Yes.
Towson?
Yes.
That motion is carried.
Thank you. One's more, could we have some of the conversation down, please? Some people want to hear. Next, we have a special assessment for the fire department, Resolution R fourteen dash seventeen.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution R dash fourteen dash seventeen, confirming a special assessment role for two thousand fourteen for fire protection within the Charter Township of Bridgeport as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve. Motion been made and seconded to approve Resolution R fourteen seventeen, the special assessment for the fire department. Do we have a roll call, please?
Miller, yes. Wilson?
Yes.
LaShore?
Yes.
Seacord?
Yes.
Thayer?
Yes.
Towson?
Yes.
That motion is carried.
Okay, now we come to board comments, Mr. Seacord?
No comment.
Mr. LaShore?
No comment.
Ms. Wilson?
No comment.
Mr. Thayer?
No comment.
Mrs. Miller? Sorry, I have, I guess I'm...
Okay, um, there's been a lot of time and a lot of research, and our concerns are not with ourselves or with this board. Our concerns have always been for the community and the safety of our community. I want this to be a safe place for these young families to raise their, their children in a safe area, have proper police perfect, protection, and to keep the, you know, to the best we can do in this community is, I mean, I know it's a problem everywhere with drugs, but we are trying our very best to see that it stays out of here as much as possible. I think the police and fire assessment is for the benefit of our community. I think that, um, I want the police department to come to my house and to be available if I have a problem or, you know, we're getting older, if there's a, if one of us has a heart attack, is up, I want those people there. I want people to protect my house and make sure that the criminals are not coming into my area. It's got nothing to do with anything personal, other than I understand what you all are going through. I don't want to pay more taxes either, but I think this is a very important amount, and it's not very much considering the benefits that we reap from it. And, um, I think that very few townships have, there are very few townships that do not have police and fire milages or assessments. We were one of very few. And I just wanted to say how important I think this is, and I should have said no comment, but I believe very strongly that this is a good thing for our community.
Thank you. I guess answer a couple of questions or maybe respond, I guess would be better. Way back when, when we initially started with the milage and the assessment and those kind of things, people got up to the microphone and made the same statements, their unfixed incomes, they blew it in their budget and all those kinds of things. And we need to cut back like, like they have to cut back. And we did those things. And we've suffered somewhat in various areas as far as service to the, to the residents that they used to get. And we've been very frugal as far as the money that we spend, and Rose does an excellent job scrutinizing just about every penny that's spent. And I don't think any of it is spent needlessly. On this, we tried our best to keep it, both, both chiefs, to keep it as low as possible, and still try and represent, or present, um, good services to the community. When you, when you don't have good police protection, when you don't have good fire department protection, it's important to many businesses, like it was talked about, that may not want to come into an area that doesn't have good police or good fire. And we're not asking for all the whistles and bells, and not asking for the fanciest, uh, police car, the fanciest piece of fire equipment. Everything is scrutinized, only spend what absolutely necessary. And that, that's what's, that's what's happened. We tried, uh, tried our best to cut back wherever possible and still provide services, and we will continue to do that. Obviously, anytime you get something like this in particular, you're not going to find everybody is going to agree that was the way to do it. Somebody's always got a better idea. We haven't been presented with any better ideas, other than just don't do it. So anyway, with that, thank you for coming, thank you for your comments. Keep in touch. For you people that are here tonight, I, I say this frequently at board meetings, and with all of you here, we have something called Constant Contact, it's a communication tool. And if you leave your email address with, Tracy, Tracy Penning pretty much takes care of it, you can leave it with one of the clerks, you call the township. If we have your email and you can wish to remain anonymous, give the email, if that's all you want to do. We send out notification of the agendas, the minutes, the planning commission, and those various things. Notifications as far as when trash pickup is going to be postponed because of holiday and, excuse me, just information in general. And the more people that sign up for it, the better, I think, uh, the communication is going to be better. People will discuss communication, we're trying to, trying to do that. Anytime you've got any questions, you can call, talk to Rose, you can talk to me, you can talk to any of the board members. I'd rather have you do that than, um, maybe get some misinformation from, from the local establishment. You may still not agree with it, but, um, at least you'll have our side of it. Okay, again, thank you everyone for coming. With that, motion to adjourn with me.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the special meeting of the Bridgeport Charter Township Board.
Hi, Eric.